2022 order, roll call please.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Here.
Ms. Maturi?
Here.
Mr. McCarthy? Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Here.
Mr. Weber?
Here.
Please stand if you're able and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. The United States of America, and this republic which stands on a nation underground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, the minutes from February 1st, 2022, council meeting.
I believe everyone has received the copy of this. I did not hear anything on any popular changes. Going down to see if anyone has any, none. I am going to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for the city council meeting held on February 1st, 2022 as written, dispensary.
Second, roll call.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Maturi?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, special reports, we have a special report from the chief of.
My glasses, let's actually read this. Mayor Mackin, President Smith, members of council. It's my honor to be here tonight to publicly honor two of the employees from the Perrysburg Police Division for their dedication and outstanding service. I believe that we need to acknowledge those employees who exemplify the mission, vision, and core values of the Perrysburg Police Division. As you're aware, the Perrysburg Police Division has both sworn staff and non-sworn staff. Although each employee serves as citizens and visitors of Perrysburg, it's done in different ways. That's why it's felt it's important to honor both a civilian employee and a sworn member of the police division each year as the Employees of the Year. In the past, Rotary or the Exchange Club has had an Officer of the Year. Once COVID hit, that kind of went by the wayside a little bit, so I wanted to bring this back and make sure we're honoring our employees that go above and beyond. I'd first like to honor a civilian Employee of the Year for 2021. Emily Wilkins began her employment with the Perrysburg Police Division in 2005 as a Communications Officer. She was later selected to serve as Records Clerk. During the past two years, Emily has been responsible for training two new Records Clerks. While training the new Records Clerks, she still maintained the daily tasks required of her Records Bureau without letting anything fall through the cracks. Most people do not realize that our property and evidence management is handled by our Records Bureau. Emily has taken ownership of this function and meticulously maintains her property room. She's provided training to our officers on proper packaging and submission of property and evidence, and is willing to come in after hours when necessary to help officers with big cases or if they're having any problems with the property submission. Emily's service is an integral part of our quality control and always looking for ways to improve our records and property functions. When I was appointed Chief, I had other chiefs tell me that my property room would either be one of my biggest headaches or one of the smoothest operations. And I'm happy to report that by far, this is one of the smoothest operations I have in our division. Additionally, Emily stays current on public records laws by attending classes and training. Emily also serves as a backup communications officer when she is needed and will step into cover shifts. Her dedication and ownership of her job shows daily through her performance, and it's my honor to present Emily with this plaque for the 2021 Civilian Employee of the Year for the Perrysburg Police Division. If you couldn't tell, Emily really enjoys the attention. Next, I would like to honor our Officer of the Year. Greg Cole has been a police officer with the Perrysburg Division since 2001. Greg spent the first 16 years of his career as a Uniform Patrol Officer mainly on the midnight shift. And I can tell you, when I worked midnight shifts with Greg, he was pretty miserable. In 2018, he applied for and was selected to be the School Resource Officer at Perrysburg High School. Greg has done an outstanding job in this position since being selected for this position. He was recently selected as the BCSN Classroom Hero of the Month for his outstanding work as the Perrysburg High School School Resource Officer. During his tenure as the School Resource Officer, Greg has demonstrated an ability to work independently and has taken ownership of the position. The teachers and administrators at the school can count on Greg to be there when a problem arises or when they just need someone to talk to. In addition to his duties as a School Resource Officer, Greg is also a Bike Patrol Officer, Alice Instructor, and is an integral part of Safety Town. Outside of work, Greg volunteers his time as a Boy Scout Troop Leader and a youth soccer coach. Greg embodies what it means to be a community police officer. It's my honor to present Greg with this plaque for the 2021 Police Officer of the Year for the Perrysburg Police Division. That is all I have for the evening, so thank you for your time.
Before you leave, unbeknownst to the chief, but also as you talked about, it is important to recognize the members of the department that serve the City of Perrysburg and further its core mission, serve its values. The chief has recently graduated from a CLE certified law enforcement executive last Friday, and I think it's worth congratulating him on all his hard work, time, and effort, and his leadership for the police division.
Letters, communication, and citizen concerns. This is your opportunity to speak on a topic that I want to speak about. There are fourteen below, there'll be some discussion about the water tower, or you might want to hold. We're gonna talk about that then. Are there any other comments? Hearing none. The administration has several announcements. One, starting Thursday, we are going to remove the requirement for masks in city properties. We're going to strongly recommend it. It is still something that is of significance, and I particularly know some people in the community who are, you know, have some risk of being susceptible to serious illness like COVID, but we are, Wood County reduced it as well, made it strongly recommended not mandated, so that is what we're going to start doing on Thursday. So, a couple other things. We have several committees that serve the resident, that are exorcism committees. Recreation Committee has already met and approved three zero, the three applicants that the administration has recommended. They are Susan Henzer, Shannon Schultz, Dustin Decker. Susan's already served on a number of committees, and everybody knows Shannon. Plan and zoning committee met. We have two candidates for the Historic Landmarks Commission that the administration has recommended and may have also been approved three zero. Susan Ruhl-Miller and Scott McPherson. Scott is an architect. So I would like to make a motion for city council to confirm these five or four.
I will go ahead and make that motion.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Maturi?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Thank you, and thank you for your willingness to serve. The mayor has no further report. City Administrator?
No report, your own.
Finance Director?
I have no report.
Law Director?
Sorry. As you all are aware, we are part of NOAC, which is an alternative energy that our citizens can opt out of. The contracts for both gas and electric are up this year, and because he can speak much more eloquently to the current options, Mark Frye is present for us from Palmer Energy to explain to you the options that will be before you in two weeks for a vote. This is just an explanation of what is coming in two weeks. There will be resolutions on each of these as well as draft agreements that we intend to sign with these organizations if you vote in favor.
Roll call.
Hey, members of council, members of the administration, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is Mark Frye. I'm the president of Palmer Energy, and we're located at 5577 Airport Highway in Toledo. Palmer Energy is the energy consultant for the Northwest Ohio Aggregation Coalition, which the City of Perrysburg has participated in for many years. Basically, what we do is act as a consultant on behalf of the city and other communities around Northwest Ohio, including the City of Toledo, Sylvania, Oregon, the Village of Holland, Ottawa, Lucas County, the City of Northwood, Waterville, Rossford, Perrysburg Township, Lake Township, Wall Bridge, I think that's pretty much everybody. So basically, we have a group on electricity, which has about 110,000 residential and 10,000 commercial customers participating in the aggregation. It's an opt-out aggregation. The City of Perrysburg voters many years ago voted to put opt-out aggregation forward, and the city is a certified aggregator, governmental aggregator at the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio. So what we do is basically take the City of Perrysburg's loans along with all the other communities around this area and combine them to get better pricing on a collective basis. We do also the same thing in natural gas, and that started a couple of years after the electricity aggregation services. And the benefits to the community for Perrysburg and the other communities in Northwest Ohio is palpable. The electric savings through January of 2021 is estimated to be approximately $103 million. Now, obviously, when you split that up on an individualized basis over many years, it's not a huge amount of money on any individual given year, but it is substantial on an annualized basis. On natural gas, it's more difficult to beat the market, and the savings for natural gas services compared to what Columbia Gas would otherwise charge those residential participants has been about 15 or 16 million dollars. So still substantial savings over an extended period of time. What Palmer did is we went out for a request for proposal to various suppliers, evaluated those proposals, we brought them back to the various communities like yourselves, and made recommendations on the best alternatives, and we're in the process of working through the contract terms and conditions now. Leslie Kavatschik from the City of Toledo, who's very experienced on energy contracts, typically takes the lead on that, and we're working with her on that as well as with the Law Director in Perrysburg, Ms. Sandretto. So one of the things that we're doing is going through those contracts. What you are being passed out that Ms. Sandretto mentioned is ordinance that would allow and authorize the mayor and administration to execute a contract based upon final approval from the Law Director and from Palmer Energy on the final pricing. Unfortunately, while we would love to give you an executed price opportunity for you to consider for two or three weeks and then consider voting on it, that's not the way the commodities market for natural gas or electricity works. You can get that, many years ago, they would hold prices, but anymore with the movement in the commodities of energy particularly, it gets more volatile and it's more challenging to do that. So what we're trying to do is align the City of Perrysburg with Toledo and Sylvania and the county, Lucas County and all the other communities, so that everybody's signing on the same, at the same time, on the same day, so that everybody can have the exact same price. If you don't do that, then you run the risk of a splintering of the aggregation coalition. So that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. If you'd like me to go into more detail, I can, but I know you have other things to do with your evening, and you probably don't want to hear about the energy markets any more than you already have. So, but I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I would just point out to you that on page two, what Mr. Frye is referring to is Section One, that when these come before you as final copies in two weeks, section one will indicate for both the electric and the gas that the mayor and director of finance be, made through by our authorized attorney, customer supply agreement, energy harbor, or dynasty, subject to final review and approval by the Law Director and the city's consultants from Palmer Energy on behalf of the City of Perrysburg. So ultimately, because of the way commodities work, you're going to pass a resolution that says I review the final contract, and our energy advisor will approve the amount. This is how we have done this in the past, just so everyone knows.
Any questions? Just information purposes, I ran some quick estimates. I think residents in the City of Perrysburg on gas and electric, since you've started to participate in the program, have saved somewhere around $7 to $7.5 million on this program over a number of years. So it's been a successful opportunity for residents who participate to save a few dollars on their energy bills.
Mark, is there an average, what an average home owner would save?
It varies quite a bit, council member, depending on what's going on with the markets. For instance, this time, we were in a rising electricity price market. We locked in at the bottom, not exactly when COVID was its most severe in regards to uncertainty, but we caught close to the bottom of the market, and we saved about $16 million. The prior contract, we only saved two or three million dollars. So it varies depending on what's going on in the market at any moment in time. Traditionally, though, it's $20 to $30 a year for an average residential customer over an extended period of time. Sometimes it's, you know, $10, other times it's $50, but nobody's getting rich on this, but, you know, it's better than a sharp stick in the eye.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thanks.
Thank you very much, everyone.
All right.
President of council board? Thank you, mayor. So as the mayor mentioned about the water tower and the conversation we're going to have here tonight, I know that myself and Councilman Coleman sat down with the mayor as well as the city administrator over the last week discussing all the options that are available. I believe you all received the message from Bridget in regards to what these options could potentially be in the cost. So we really have about three different options that we could be looking at here. Option number one is to go with one of the graphic designs that was presented to us at the last council meeting. We have a second option where we could try to beat the timeline with, putting funds aside for a graphic designer to create a design that we could guide them towards, at least a couple of designs that they could bring back to council itself. And then we have a third option where we could just have the current company put back up there what is already up. So what I'm going to kind of jump for, I could either take a feel for everyone, or I could make a motion on what we're looking at here. Did everyone have a chance to see that email today?
Yeah, and if I could just add a couple of things to it here.
Yeah.
Because I think it's important to kind of discuss a couple of the logistical issues.
You are the only participant in the conference.
For the record.
Please press any key on your keypad to remain in the conference.
Is, one, this is a routine maintenance thing. We need to paint this inside and out because of the minerals in the water, mineral levels in the water, is that correct, fair to say, mayor?
It needs to be repaired. It's repair and included.
Okay. So that's one of the things we're dealing with. This is part of a scheduled maintenance item that is timely. And then, two, if we were to paint it now and then go back and repaint it, it presents a logistical problem with draining the water again, so it's not really feasible. We are draining this water tower out while this is happening in this process, and if we were to go back and paint an additional, more elaborate design than what we decide tonight, there would be quite a bit of cost of draining the water and man-hours of draining it again, as well as potential water pressure issues, things like that. So there, time is of the essence on this project, so I think it's important to know that we are considering that as part of our decision.
So with that, if we looked at this, I think if we were to put on what was back up there, the vicinity of the estimate was 45,000 to 48,000. If we were to go the route of waiting and doing this later, we would be in the three-figure, sorry, not three-figure, sorry, six-figure usually to do it later. And the other option would be to accept what's on there, or not accept what's on there, to go with one of the other options that was presented to council at the last meeting, which we all know those cost breakdowns. And then the other potential option would be to do the hiring a graphic designer, giving them 30 days to come back with something to us for the next council meetings, and trying to get that put through to fit this April to June timeframe. What I am going to do, I guess, right now is I'm going to make a motion and see where it lies and where things go.
And we're going to have discussion on the motion.
Yeah, so we'll have a discussion on the motion once we get to them. I'm going to make a motion that the administration shall put back what's currently on there with a color scheme that is appropriate for the City of Perrysburg logo. And if possible, to incorporate the black lettering of Perrysburg as part of the logo versus what's up there, versus the Perrysburg block lettering up there now, if that makes sense.
And the figures are the same?
The, or this is just. Trying to keep everything as if that's.
All right, they remain the black, the black, the green.
For a color scheme that matches what the Perrysburg lettering is going to be.
So it could be, I think what he's saying is they could be black, blue, gray, whatever matches that branding scheme, the color scheme.
Yes, thank you. And I would also add in that we would set aside 55,000 for this.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I will not vote for anything that it seems what with the line item bid for what we were going to put back up there, that is, to me, fiscally irresponsible to spend $50,000 on a paint job to advertise a city. I just won't do it, especially when we're raising the rates. To me, it's just not tenable.
I do have some discussion if we're going. I just have some clarification on the email that you sent Bridget. So it says the estimate for, and I'm trying to understand this, the estimate to keep it substantially the same with the silhouettes. I know we're trying to add maybe incorporate our new branding with that, is between 45 and 48,000 with 35,000 already in the bid for that. That 35 is the branding element, right?
That is the name of the city with the name City of Perrysburg.
Okay.
In the state of Ohio.
Okay. So I guess what I will say is, I will be voting for this. I appreciate your take on that, Jan. To me, I view it as not, we're not expending extra money. To me, the baseline bid should have included what the design originally was. And any decision we're making to change it goes from there. If we wanted to accept a reduced cost to put something less than what we already have up there for the sake of fiscal conservative, being fiscally conservative, I understand that. But I believe the baseline bid should have been based on what was already there, okay? And I'm not going to support any measure that changes it with what I consider a Perrysburg landmark without more input from our citizenry. And I'll say, I'm not a huge fan of what's up there right now. I share the sentiment of the people, you know, what I can go off of is Facebook, the discussion that was had on Facebook, and that's not the best of discussions to go off of, right? But there were over 200 comments on one, there was over 60 on another, and the consistent sentiment was they liked the idea that the silhouettes create that Perrysburg is a family-friendly town. And I don't want to take that away with them without talking to my constituents, and I don't think we had ample discussion with them to make that choice on their behalf.
Go ahead.
It would be doing this now with, in conjunction. I agree. And so this would be doing this in conjunction versus trying to find the graphic designer and hoping that we get it done in time. This way, there's an expectation this will be done at the same time.
I would just like to point out, if this had been added to the bid at the time, it would not be what it is now with the cost of the paint prices is what's driving it up, not to mention there's other factors taken into consideration. This could be a change order.
That is something that we have discussed at the long term. It does put us over 10 several of the construction estimate. And to make sure that we are handling it appropriately.
And if it's a change order, that's a best guess, best guess estimate. It can go up a lot higher.
That is correct. It gives us a better estimate.
My only question is, and I understand that we're using Facebook as a sentiment, there were several people who commented that there were negative racial overtones that were on.
Do you want me to address that?
The administration is concerned about that. That's why we made another recommendation, which we also think is fiscally responsible. And I think we have to be mindful that the community is changing and more diverse, and we want to be more welcoming. The administration would prefer not to keep those for that reason, because as was stated in several Facebook posts, and we're just going by Facebook, but I know other people have said this, if one person feels unwelcome and was teased, and there was a Facebook post that somebody says, "I was teased specifically because of that," I think my administration would like to get rid of that problem. But that's, if we can, if this solves it, I'd be more than happy to address it.
And I can address that, Tom, if you don't mind. So my, and I agree with you, I don't want anybody to feel unwelcome in our community. And if we're going to, so we have a water tower with black silhouettes, and if we're going to have a grown-up conversation about it, we got to address what the joke is. And the joke is that there's not many black people in Perrysburg, and those are, the people on the water tower are the few that live here, right?
Right. And African-Americans have been told, you're the only African-American in Perrysburg except for on the water tower.
Correct. So when I look at that sentiment, to me, it's not the water tower that's the problem, okay? Racial jokes are going to be made no matter what we do, okay? And changing a water tower is not an appropriate reaction to that. Changing the culture that we live in, in our community, and trying to harbor diversity here, which I think our administration is doing a great job by the way, I'm not taking a shot at that, but changing a water tower because one joke is being made is not fixing a problem. You got to be cognizant of what the problem is, and most jokes hurt when there's a hint of truth to them, okay? So we need to look internally, accept that constructive criticism, embrace it, try to turn it into a positive, let's make this a more diverse place, let's make this a more welcoming place. And me personally, I don't think it's the silhouettes that are the unwelcoming sign in this whole thing. It's the people that are willing to make those jokes freely that are the problem.
I don't disagree with any of that, but I think, from my perspective, I am not the right person to speak on the rights of an African-American, because I am as wise as everybody up here, but if one African-American says that, hey, I think we'd feel more welcomed, if a stigma that exists is removed by the city, that that would be a step in the right direction. No, I totally agree that the water tower is not the root cause, the hate and the vile that underlies a racist joke is. But if we, as a community, can put something up there that does no harm, I'm not saying any of the other locals are super great, does no harm, we can take one step further to saying we are a welcoming community and we can do those things. I get the sentiment of why people like it, I get it, but I also think it's the administration, the council can make their recommendations move forward, the administration will, those not be up there.
Now, with that said, it's my understanding with this motion that they aren't, the silhouettes aren't necessarily going to be painted black in the final rendering. Is that the motion you made, Jonathan?
Whatever colors, the color scheme that is part of the.
Dark blue.
I'm a fan of that cobalt blue that the city has taken on as their, with their new branding, and is the base coat color of the water tower going to stay the same that Aqua or whatever that, I don't know what.
Whatever, yeah.
Yes, and I think that cobalt blue looks really good on that, and those silhouettes in that color would just be beautiful up there. And, but aside from the colors, I mean, that is a welcoming, that is a very welcoming scene on there with all the family-friendly activities that are going on in the, in those. scene on there with all the family-friendly activities that are going on in the, in those. So but the blue, I think the blue with our new block letters above it would look very sharp.
I'll just add, if we ever given, if there was more time, I think, and I don't want to speak for everyone up here on council, but I believe that, for myself, would love to see us try to update those those figurines to make them more modern, more accurate to what what we see today.
If that's if that's a possibility to do in our timeframe, I would love to see that, too. That can, you know, that those those figures could be, you know, very, very diverse. And maybe, I don't know if you can add more than one color, maybe they don't all have to be one color. I'm no artist, so, but I do know that that has become a landmark and and not just the unscientific survey we did on Facebook, but, I mean, for years, I've had out-of-town people say, you know, we know we're getting close to coming to see you when we see that water tower. We always, it just, it's just, it's just become a part of Perrysburg. And I think a lot of our residents, the majority of our residents probably would like to see it stay. And we can, we can put all those distasteful jokes behind us, I think, if we try to make an effort to make it the right colors on there.
I would like to point out two things. Nobody ever, driving down 75, ever saw a water tower of a city and said, oh, I'm going to stop and visit the city. It's not the water tower that they visited. Second of all, I would like to point out, out of a population of 20, almost 20,000, 200 is not even 10%.
Well, we're not going to the unscientific of a Facebook contribution, but.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I just want to make comment, I was still just a little disappointed. I know we need to get this thing done. I was still a little disappointed that we weren't able to involve the the arts community. I know we have a lot of very, that would have actually done a very good job, I think, in regards to diversity, where that comes from, the arts community involved in. So I still would have liked to see that. I don't, I don't know if that's still an option at this point in time. Have we looked into that at all? I mean, it sounds like, I mean, you mentioned hiring a graphic designer, but I mean, something maybe more organic from a local artist is an opportunity to be involved in this.
I think the problem was, I'll address it, at this point, is just the timeframe. And if I understand correctly from the email I have from our city administrator, is that with the 30-day turnaround time and trying to get everything on on time for the painter to get that done within that small timeframe, it may be more difficult to have the design ready to go for them to paint when they're done painting and trying to get them to come back and finish that. Am I incorrect in that assessment?
No, that is correct. First off, we're making an assumption that any different design is something that the current contractor would even even perform. So we're making that assumption first off. So if we went through the process of hiring a graphic designer, which I personally don't know any, and we'd have to do an RFQ, do qualifications, bring somebody in, do interviews, get proposals, select proposal, let that person do their work to come up with one, two, three, whatever options council's looking at, once that came back to council, council would have to make a question, a decision very quickly. I don't know that there's time to shop it around to the arts community and have somebody organically create a design or do a call-for-artists type of format. I don't think there is that time. And once we would have that design in hand, we would then have to ask the contractor if they'd be willing to quote it and then perform the work. Because there is no guarantee, even right now, that they will modify their contract other than the base bid that they've already bid. They gave us a verbal estimate, we have nothing in writing, that they would be willing to perform a change order.
Okay, so the contract's not signed?
The contract is signed, but it only had a base bid in it for the, for the city of Perrysburg.
Okay, and in regards to that, the motion that is being made here, the estimate is given that redo the image that is on the water tower, that's the way it was stated, so we're redoing the images. Are there any foreseen costs and change in costs if we use multiple colors on that?
Yes.
Okay.
This was for a one-color silhouette. And any modifications to the figures that are up there will require somebody to make those modifications to then be submitted to the construction company to see if they'd be willing to make that modification as well.
Bridgette, if I can, just, I think I have maybe two or three questions for you. So if this motion were to pass, I assume we will try to get a written contract based upon what we passed?
Correct. We would go out and ask them for a a written amendment that we would then shop through the law department, and we would then bring that back to the city council.
Is, I think Jonathan made the motion for $55,000 reserved for that design based on the 48. Are you suggesting that the change in the color from black to the cobalt blue to match the logo may change that?
Not necessarily the color, depending on on the color and what's involved in mixing that color is my understanding. I don't know how different going from black to a cobalt blue is in their world, because the paint right now in paint industry is pretty difficult. The paint that you paint a water tower with runs between $250 and $300 a gallon, so that is, that is an issue. But we would go back and ask them for a written quotation to lock in a price.
Okay.
That was today's price, literally this morning's price, their estimate, but they only had four or five days in which to come up with that price.
So how quickly would we have a contractual price?
We would work our best to get it as soon as possible. But it's going to, I mean, I can, I can ask tomorrow, but I, but I'm at the mercy of the contractor.
So we could call a special meeting to address that if we needed to?
Certainly.
Wait till next, okay. And then also, as far as this $35,000 for the logo, if we were able to, say, we we decide, we get this contractual language and it's $75,000, we don't want to do that, are we able to, the contract we already approved as council, are we able to take the logo off of it and just paint this blank without them rescinding or having?
I would think that this council would have the ability to request to nonperform an item, that particular item, so there would be no designation, there'd be nothing on it with the words Perrysburg.
Okay, so it could, it could save the taxpayers another $35,000 if we chose that?
If you chose it, I believe that the contract would not have a problem nonperforming that that particular item.
It wouldn't alter the the price other than that $35,000 in your belief?
Correct.
Okay. And then the other question is, how often, I understand that it's been painted several times with that same design, is that correct?
My understanding is that people remember that it was originally on there and that it may have been painted once since then. I don't have that history, nor do we have the bid documents from back then, so I don't don't know that timeframe.
So how long do we expect this to last before we have to paint it again?
It depends on if other repairs come up. Every five years, these water towers are supposed to be inspected. That's what triggered this event. For this particular tower, the report that came back from the inspection firm said that there was X amount of needed repairs to be made. That's the reason why we're taking down the tower, sandblasting the tower, to make those repairs, to then repaint the tower.
And when when those, so was that an EPA thing?
EPA requires us to every five years.
Okay.
Inspect water.
And how long, when they gave that report to us, how long was the action plan? How long did we have to act?
We have to act immediately. So I believe that we had that report this, around the summer of 2020, and we went out and engaged, did the request for proposals to engage the firms to do the inspection. And the result of that inspection came back during last year, which allowed us to put the bid specifications together. It was January of 2020.
January of 2020, we knew we had to do the inspection and then we did the inspection. What's the timeframe from that inspection? When did we get the inspection result and realize we had to paint this?
I don't remember when we actually got the reports back, but once we did get the reports back, we put together the request for qualifications to go out to get an engineering firm to design the repairs.
Okay.
And it took them, I think, well over half a year to design the repairs, once we actually bid it out, then we bid it out. So we came to you back in, I think, September to approve that contract for those repairs. And if I backtrack, there's probably not much downtime in between us finding that out, engaging an engineering firm, getting plans and specifications, bidding those out, getting those responses back, and bringing it to utilities and then to your council's attention.
Is that something in the future, if we get that report back, we can do potential analysis into whether we want to change the design while the engineering firm is doing their?
As long as we are not under an EPA order, I would say yes.
Okay.
The impetus here, though, is we are under a notice of violation.
Okay. I'm just trying to get the timeframes up, so if this happens again, we know what we needed, in my opinion, what we should be doing to, if we want to change the design. So I just want those timelines fresh in my head.
I have two questions. Corey, first, were you, were you suggesting just doing the silhouettes without the word Perrysburg on it?
I was just curious. It was just questions. I want to provide a baseline.
All right, yeah, because I think it would be imperative to have Perrysburg on it. Also, Bridgette, you mentioned about mixing colors of paint, but we are going with that color already in the bid, that cobalt blue for our lettering, right?
That is correct. That was what was shopped to them. That's what they made their original pricing based on.
So if we were to decide to stick with that one color, then there is no additional mixing of colors?
There is no additional mixing as long as they can get all the components readily to make that color up in that quantity.
We'd like to see the same colors that are, the lettering that is proposed to complete the the figures back on there, okay?
Again, until I have something written in hand, or have a verbal, and that was today's pricing, it might not be tomorrow's pricing.
I have a question about that. You probably don't all know what the original price was per gallon in the original bid.
They, I don't think the quantities were specked out like that. If I remember correctly, I think the specs.
It was just to paint it at probably so many square, some more feet.
Oh, let's see here. It did not, it has the the mils for the letter coating of two to three mils, but it does not give me a quantity of paint.
So it doesn't give you a price for?
And I'm looking at the specifications, I'd have to go back to the actual bid results to see if it was broken out specifically.
I was trying to find that, because my point is the change, the price difference in the paint, and it's only going to get worse. They could come back to you and say, yes, we'll do it, but we want to do it by time and time of material.
And that could ultimately be how they gave us that pricing.
Right.
I am not sure. We actually just got a lonesome number, Brian received it this morning from the, from the contractor.
And when they do force account, it can be substantially more than just $38,000.
It will.
Significantly.
It will be seen once we have something in writing.
Yes. If they choose to go that route, which they can, because we signed a contract with them for what we have, and we're, we're changing it, so they can come back to us and say, yeah, we'll do it, we're going to do a force account. I've never seen a force account, very rarely.
I fortunately have not had the pleasure of dealing with those very often in my, uh.
They're always more expensive than what you think.
Almost 30 years in public.
They're always more expensive than what you think.
That was always on the engineering side.
I shouldn't say always, but usually they're a lot more expensive than what you would think they would be because they're, they're not going to get stuck with the price.
Any other? I'm just making sure. So if if we get a contract price that's greater than $55,000, we'll see this again?
Uh, yes.
Because we'd need to prove it.
I think, based on how our contract currently reads and our contingency, we'll have to bring anything back to the city council.
Anything has to come back.
Yeah, okay. So this is basically an addendum to the contract. We're not losing that original bid by trying to give an addendum to it, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I understand where you think that $38,000 for this is okay, but that's okay, I'm sorry.
Well, I think it's a situation that I feel like we're in now, we're obviously against time, we're up against cost, and we're also up against something the community feels passionate about, not just us up here as council members. I've had a lot of people reach out to me again, like I expressed last time, and there's an unfortunate scenario here, and while we must be good stewards of the money, we also must also make decisions on what are reflective of what the residents and citizens want. So we're in an unfortunate situation, but, you know, I hope we don't, I hope we learn from this going into a project like this in the future.
And I will say one thing, I know I've been kind of negative here. One thing I don't want to lose on this is, yeah, while I did not like the new design, our administration and the team did a fantastic job getting an excellent bid on this project. I think that's been overshadowed by this conversation, we should reflect on that. We are still coming in six figures under budget for the timing of this bid because it was, it was done the right way. The design components, what we're arguing about up here.
Any other discussion?
That is, and that's the only reason I, I'm.
I'm going to call the, the mayor's a place. Roll call, please.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Attorney?
No.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Very good. That is the end of the president's council report, I think it's a new record, by the way. Thank you. Line Ann, technical development?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did meet on February 8th. The meeting was called to order at 5:32 by Chairman Mark Weber, committee members present, or myself and Jonathan Smith, Tim McCarthy was absent. Also present were Bridget Cabot, city administrator, Amber Rathburn, finance director, Kayla Trejo, deputy finance director, and Nathan Summers joined us, he's a software specialist. There were no objections to the minutes, so they were proved 2-0. Esri, Esri contact track, I think I'm saying that right, Esri, yeah. Mr. Summers explained that, that Esri, Environmental System Research Institute Incorporated is the industry leader in the GIS software. As the city grows, more people are using GIS tools for management purposes, disaster planning, analyzing police, fire, and EMS runs. This is a three-year agreement. Mr. Smith wanted to know why Esri was selected and if if there are other companies that do this. Mr. Summers explained that there really is not. We could go through a third party, but would still be using Esri products. The committee agreed 2-0 to recommend this on the city council. Banking depository agreement, Ms. Rathburn explained that every five years, the city bids their banking services. Ms. Rathburn and Ms. Trejo sent letters to every bank that has a branch in Perrysburg, as well as advertised in the Messenger Journal for two weeks. They received four bids and determined that they will stay with Huntington. They have the lowest fees and they're happy with their current services. Committee agreed 2-0 to recommend this to city council. In the 2022 budget amendment discussions, Mr. Smith noted the increase for Wednesdays at Woodlands music program. Ms. Cabot confirmed that this will add four more events, taking it through the end of August. Mr. Smith was curious about the cost of recycling materials Ms. Cabot will pass along to city council members the updated numbers for recycling, along with the glass recycling at O.I. Ms. Cabot stated that the ARPA funds could be used for safe routes to school. And we went on to the finance director's report. I asked about the Fishbeck charge for $12,732.25, and if we have seen any of their designs yet for the Louisiana Avenue ADA project. Ms. Cabot explained that the administration has not seen the designs yet, but they have received some plan sheets, and they will now be working on some overall designs. I had asked for a reminder on what TSI in the amount of $18,355 was for, and Ms. Rathburn explained that is for the fire department to properly fit their masks, their face masks for oxygen. As far as health insurance funding, Ms. Rathburn noticed, noted an increased premium for 2022, and that the fund balance remains steady. In other business, the committee discussed an ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance 5-2022 to allow for the use of gender-neutral language in the code. Ms. Cabot is going to check with Ms. Sandretto to ensure that we are not duplicating any language. And Mr. Smith stated that he does not have an issue with the changes, but he does not want us to be redundant by making multiple changes. I requested that this come back to the finance committee in March or be discussed at the next city council meeting after discussed with Ms. Sandretto. There was no further business, and we adjourned at 6:17. But I do want to talk about that now. It's, it's not noted in the report, but Mr. Smith did point out that there is, there is existing language in the administrative code that addresses this issue and and would would make ordinance 5-2022 somewhat redundant. Because in section 202.03 B2, under the rules of construction. of construction, it states that words of one gender include the other genders. And although it's a little simpler, but it just seemed to us that it covers, it covers the entire code. And the problem, other problem we found with the way it's written right now is in section one of the ordinance that we passed last time, you know, section one, the first line says, "The city of Perrysburg codified ordinance as I hereby amended to read. All references to he and/or she are amended to they, and all references to his and/or her are amended to their." So we do have, I would just like to, I'm going to make a motion to repeal this. That way we can have some discussion on it, okay? So I would like to make a motion to repeal ordinance 5-2022 as an emergency measure for reasons previously mentioned.
Second. Discussion. Do we need to roll first?
Oh, yeah.
Ms. Matroni?
No, it's just a motion.
No, no, it's just a motion.
Really, all you're doing is just saying it back to where we were before.
Yes. If we just go right back to where we were, I think we're completely covered with all the gender-neutral language by the rules of construction, which I didn't see before, and I don't know if any of us really paid much attention to that before, but it's certainly in there. But if we want to move forward with maybe some different arguments, but what we decided, what we found out that is for our publishing company to make changes, $23 a page, go through our code and make changes, and we would have to approve those too. So it's a lot of, it seems like just a lot of process for nothing, if we already have it in here. And I don't think there would be any confusion or anybody not feeling included in this.
I think most of us read the email from Attorney Miley with his concerns on the ordinance. I'm thankful that citizens reach out for stuff like this. I think we should kind of treat this almost like we did with the personnel code, where we're trying to change it, ordinance by ordinance, resolution, you know, ordinance by ordinance, I should say. So if you want to do that in finance committee or over any of the committees to address gender issues within the code itself, I think my personnel committee will be open to reviewing those changes, one ordinance at a time.
You're going to go through the whole code?
I'm not saying I'm going to. I think that's the appropriate way to do it, rather than having a blanket ordinance that changes our entire code, not specifically.
Might not be necessary.
It's not necessary at all, but if we want to make those changes.
I don't.
But I don't either.
So we're just repealing the motion?
That's all. That's all. I have a motion. Just to repeal that ordinance.
Echo Mark Coughlin Weber's words that he said with this, so.
Roll call.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Okay. Then I'll go on to the other legislation. The first one was second reading for our amended budget. And so I would like to introduce ordinance 8-2022 for the second reading and move that the rules be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ordinance 8, 2022, admitting ordinance 54, 2021, to reamended that ordinance 4, 2022, to amend appropriations for current expenses and other expenditure for the year ending December 31st, 2022, and declaring an emergency.
All right. I would like to introduce resolution 13-2022 and move that the rules be suspended, allow for its reading by number and title only, and to dispense with the second and third readings.
Second.
13, 14, yeah, if there's, if there's any, yeah, thank you. If there's not any objections, I'll make it.
I do.
Okay, then I'll do it separately.
Thank you.
Okay. So there it is.
Roll call.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Resolution 13, 2022, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Esri to provide the city with unlimited unrestricted Esri license and software, declaring an emergency.
I move that resolution 13-2022 be passed as an emergency measure.
Second. Oh, sorry. Sorry. You do that second. Very non-roll call?
Mr. Smith?
Sorry. You're open for discussion. I said a question. I noticed that in the budget for this year is $100,000 for that particular wine item. In years past, it looks like we spent a little bit more. Is there any additional to this that we might spend more? Why maybe that costs a little bit lower now than in previous years for that apartment?
I can answer. Yeah. There's other items in that budget line. It's not just this one item. That's why it's higher.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, because I think that this came in at like, not over that.
No, it's under.
Yeah, significantly, but there are other items in that line item.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Other discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Finally, I would like to introduce resolution 14-2022 and move that the rules be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only, and dispense with the second and third readings.
Second. Roll call?
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Resolution 14, 2022, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Huntington Bank to serve as depository for the city funds, declaring an emergency.
I move that resolution 14-2022 be passed as an emergency measure.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
No.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
All right. Our next meeting is Tuesday, March 8th at 5:30 PM. That's the end of my report.
Safety committee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I cannot report for safety. I have it locked out of my calendar. I think we are the fourth one Tuesday at 6:00 PM, but I don't know what the date is.
Be the 22nd, wouldn't it?
22nd?
You're on the 22nd at 6:00 PM.
Thank you.
Edit. Excellent. Do your painting.
Recreation committee?
Thank you, Mayor. We had a meeting on February 8th at 6:30 PM. Myself was present along with Councilman Van Hoozen and Councilman Coleman. Also present was Bridget Cabot, our city administrator. We had no city concerns. Our minutes were approved unanimously. We already heard about our Pratt appointments and already approved those here on council, so let's get them to the YMCA pool contract. We had Steve Shives, who is the district vice president, has been working with Ms. Cabot for the upcoming operating season. They're looking to open the pool on June 2nd and close it on August 2nd, just before school starts. The biggest change was upping lifeguard salaries substantially to stay competitive in the, in this labor market. Mrs. Smith wanted to discuss keeping the pool open after school starts, as there has been some inquiries. Mr. Shives stated that they tried to it in 2015 through Labor Day weekend and had found very few people used the pool when school started. The attendance members were not even close to justify keeping the pool open after the start of the school year. The committee members suggested we investigate exploring additional amenities that could be added to the pool and have a conversation later this year about some possible different options and upgrades. The committee agreed 3-0 to recommend this to city council. Next, we had a discussion about the Orleans parking lots. Ms. Cabot explained that GADIS paving excavating provided the lowest and best bid for the proposed work at $168,749.73. Has equipment, expertise, personnel, and knowledge to perform the required work. This will bring the parking lot up to the city code. Mr. Smith wanted to know where we are with the path and where it will connect with the current multi-use path at Orleans Park. Ms. Cabot said they are still working with Ohio EPA regarding to intercept our pipe and where they may have to go. Mr. Coleman wanted to know about the multi-use path at Orleans Park, if we have seen any erosion or issues with ice floes. Ms. Cabot said that we have not seen any erosion. Committee agreed 3-0 to recommend this to the city council. Rotary Park parking lot. Again, we have, Ms. Cabot explained that GEO Cradle Company provided the lowest and best bid for the proposed work at $292,899.78, and again, has the equipment, expertise, personnel, and knowledge to perform the required work. They will be bringing this parking lot up to the city code as well by changing some drainage and adding more ADA parking spaces. The committee members want to ensure that there were additional ADA spaces above what is required along the inclusive playground entrance. Ms. Cabot confirmed the additional ADA spaces are included as discussed with Wood County plays. Mr. Smith expressed concerns about the current parking lot being used as a cut-through road with drivers through it. Ms. Cabot also explained that the cut-through at the YMCA parking lot will be eliminated. The committee agreed 3-0 to recommend this to city council. Next item was the ARPA funding. Mr. Smith would like to see restrooms at Rotary Park upgraded to have heat, so they can remain open during late fall through winter. Mr. Coleman wanted to know about having security cameras installed on the outside of restroom since there have been vandalism issues in many of our park restrooms. Ms. Cabot explained that they are beginning to acquire the cameras, and these will not be monitored by the police 24/7, but if there is an incident, they can go back to look at the videos and attempt to find the person who did the damage. Mr. Van Hoozen added that he would like to see this ARPA funds used for something more permanent, had the idea of buying parkland. Committee wanted to bring attention to McKinley Woods Park area and would like to see the city begin designing that location. In other business, Mr. Coleman wanted to recognize all the new Pratt members and staying for the entire recreation committee, as it was another long one. There may be no further business. The meeting adjourned at 7:53 PM. We do have tentatively scheduled for March 8th. I know one of the committee members reached out that that may not work. Out of curiosity, is there anything coming from the administration? Anything that might be coming up?
I don't think we have anything for me to submit to the rep. I can double check if.
What if we tentatively keep the date? If we need to make a change, we can make a change? I'm going to have a conflict. You're going to have a conflict too, so I can't be there by myself, so I think there's something against that. Looking at the calendars, is there, you want to wait and see if anything's going to come on the agenda? We can push it back later?
Yeah.
Okay. I think everyone's in agreement, so we'll, we know it's supposed to be March 8th at 6:30, but it's very likely that it could either be canceled or removed, so we'll leave that up in the air for now. With that, I do have three resolutions. If it's okay with everyone, I'm going to do the YMCA on its own, and then I'm going to do the two parking lots together.
That's fine. Jonathan, I have one question.
Yeah.
Where did the committee end up on the idea of various defined parkland and/or sounds like looking in the park area? I mean, where does that go from here?
So for the parkland itself, we were having conversations about if there is anything available at this point. I know that there was some conversation that may be coming back to the planning and zoning committee. I think it was also, we got to be careful with what qualifies for ARPA funds. So while we like the idea of acquiring more parkland, it may not be a necessary usage of ARPA funds. We do have funds still set aside that we can utilize within the budget. I want to say the last I checked was over $400,000, that we do have set aside specifically for park acquisition. The problem is finding the land that's available for it. So we still had some conversations about where we could locate it. I think we ultimately, the committee said it may be in our best interest to start looking at developing McKinley Woods. Keep it, the committee wants to correct me if I'm wrong here, keep an eye out for any land that could become available and bring that out, but see if we can start working on the design of McKinley Woods and turn that into a viable park system.
And I'm not sure that ARPA question, you'd like to go to, if you use the buyer park, but I think that's still.
Okay.
But your committee still didn't keep it on the way.
Yeah. It was something I've been kind of talking about for a while, because I know we have, so every time that we have these new developments go in, the developers have to put, either provide green space or put money aside for future park acquisitions, and that's where that $400,000 has come from, is that many of these developments have put money aside to the city to hold for future park acquisitions or development. And I still think it would be appropriate if we can find a location to look at it. The problem is finding a location in the city that isn't under development. Or at least that would be large enough. I think there's property out there, it's just not necessarily large enough right now.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure it's not getting lost.
No.
We don't hear about it for five months, then, and we're bad talking about it.
Well, I can keep it on it. I can keep it a standing item on the agenda.
Yeah, and if you don't mind.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
You don't have to talk about it every month, but just, that way you'll be the collective memory of council that we don't.
You got it. All right. So with that, I will like to introduce resolution 15, 2022, and move the rules to be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only, dispense with the second and third readings. Second. Roll call.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yeah.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Resolution 15, 2022, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Huntington Bank, with the management of this city's swimming pool, and declaring an emergency.
All right. I move that resolution 15, 2022 be passed as an emergency measure. Second. Roll call. Are there discussions? Roll call.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
And I would also like to introduce resolution 16, 2022, and resolution 17, 2022, and move that the rules be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only, and dispense with the second and third. Second. Roll call.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Resolution 16, 2022, a resolution awarding bid in agreement to GADIS paving and excavating Inc. in an amount of $168,749.73 for the Orleans Park parking lot, and declaring an emergency. Resolution 17, 2022, a resolution awarding bid in agreement to GEO Cradle Company in amount of $292,899.78 for the Rotary Park parking lot, and declaring an emergency.
All right. I move that resolution 16, 2022, and resolution 17, 2022 be passed as an emergency measure. Discussion. Second. I thought it was the second after, but. Roll call.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
That is the end of my report. Thank you. Planning and zoning, and then I apologize, but I have another private engagement to go to. No, leave the chair. Do we have to have a vote for it? We need a motion. What? Still do you have to vote for some of the oldest president of council who are sort of going?
I'll make a motion that President Council takes over the proceedings. Is that what you're looking for?
No, I mean someone to take over this president of council, because we sort of have someone. Any discussions? Roll call.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?